We're gonna start our council meeting.
Our pledge. Our pledge is against the sin of the United States of America. To do with our land, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I just talked to you afterwards.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Scott, how are you?
Good.
I'm good, thanks for asking.
How are you doing?
Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Here.
Sherry. Marilyn?
Here.
Cheryl?
Here.
David?
Here.
All right, do we have any prior, um, people from the audience that would like to speak? Just Sheila.
I, no, my request, thank you.
Um, we'll do.
I'd like to, um, request an approval on the minutes for the December nineteenth twenty twenty-four regular council meeting.
Make that motion.
Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the year-end meeting notes from December nineteenth, twenty twenty.
For?
For.
I'll say.
Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry? Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four special meeting notes. Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry? Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, we're on the five fiscal officer financial report. Um, income and property tax collected year-to-date for two thousand twenty-five. Twenty, twenty thousand, three hundred, three dollars and fifty-six cents. Total revenue collected to date for, I suppose, say, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah.
One hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred, seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents. Expenditures to the year-to-date. Two hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-two cent. Fund bank balance for December of two thousand twenty-four, two million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred, sixty-six dollars and thirty cent.
Sounds like we're rich.
Six, all business. Do we have anything else? Seven, council president's report.
All right, I just have a couple of things. First thing is, just a reminder that here's some flyers, um, some pamphlets, please grab something. I'm going to grab the, um, uh, active seniors, hoping to maybe get some type of funding for something down at the community building. I am going to be the representative for regional planning, so, you know, we've, we've paid our fee for them, haven't seen a lot in terms of the grants and those type of things, so I'm gonna try to get with Pete and that team and, and, and see, you know, hopefully they can help us get through some of this stuff and we can get some of these grants and sidewalks and all those things that we've talked about. So please feel free, you know, there's a description with some of the stuff that, uh, grab one of these before you leave tonight so that we have some, some activities going on. The other thing is, um, Marilyn and I are gonna flip-flop, uh, committees. I'm gonna be on the service committee, she's gonna be on utilities. With Marilyn being on utilities, I still wanna be an active member of being able to help get grants and work towards getting some of the grants that we need for upkeep for the water and the sewer, so, I, I, I told her that I would, I would work with her on that and we could work together as a team and, and see what we can get accomplished this year. And then the second thing is, um, Grace was here last meeting, she talked about some of the activities going on down at the library. So I was hoping that we would be able to partner with them. They had a meeting tonight, I went to the meeting. Unfortunately, what they're doing is solely focused on doing things there at the library, so it's all geared towards anything that they could do for helping the kids, uh, there at the library. So she did say that, you know, she didn't wanna be on the committee for the Fun in the Sun, but she did run it for three years and she said, and I don't remember this, but she said they had a three-year-long, three-hour-long parade at one point in time, so she was definitely anxious to say she would share some of their learnings and some of their knowledge with us so that we could move forward. So Charles, what I'm gonna need is, we are gonna need a five oh one C three. I have names of people to be on that committee, so if we could please, I can send you that email, uh, information and we can get that started so that we can, you know, be in the running to be able to get some of the stuff that people wanted to donate to us last year. Um, I still be part of this committee and of course anyone on this council that wants to be part of it, but I wanna see it through until we can get it going and get it running and, and hopefully other people in the community will wanna step in and, and help with some of the activities or, uh, around town, so, um, and... That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Eight, we have dispatch, police, fire, and rescue.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the dispatchers' police and fire report for December two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Do we have anything for the police department?
Yes. I think you gave it to a second committee meeting.
Okay. I'll second. Did somebody second?
I did. All right, Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Uh, I will say before the one, um, I had, we had a meeting last night, a short one, legal meeting. Um, we're still talking about the village.
Okay.
For the, um, thing, we did not sign anything yet. Uh, the one that they did talk about, uh, it would increase a hundred and eighty-one per hundred thousand house. So, but that's, we're still discussing it and we'll talk about it at our next meeting.
You know what village one that is, Terry?
Five point one seven.
Okay. And that's one eighty-one per hundred thousand?
That's what they figured out, yes.
Do taxes just go up reasonably?
Yes.
We have a thirty-three percent increase.
Yeah.
Do you know?
That's akin to what they did in summer too.
Do you know if Sam got the report he was asking?
No, I, I tried to look for mine that I had from my last report, so I'll get it when we go in on a Thursday meeting.
Okay.
Um, Jennifer wasn't there last night.
Okay. Was that meeting advertised?
I, I think so. I think, uh, yeah, it's for, it would, yeah, it was a legal thing, we had to sign up. That's all I have on fire.
Thank you, Terry. None, we have mayor's communication. Um, I had spoke with a, a young lady today. She, what she does is, she grows her own produce and she distributes it, and what she wants to do is try and come into the community and help us out with it, so what she's gonna do is get a flyer to me, I'm gonna distribute it throughout the neighborhood and, um, to the schools, the Renaissance, stuff like that, senior home, and she will deliver the produce to you, so I believe she said the boxes are somewhere around twenty-five bucks and they weigh about, I think she said about forty pounds, so it's a, it's quite a bit you get in there, and she said it's all fresh and grown through her, her homework, or, or, or she has it. So she's gonna give me a little more information on that and I'll have that by the next council meeting. I spoke with her today. Um, another thing is, uh, Nicole's no longer with us, uh, she moved back to her other job, so we are advertising for the fiscal position. It's been up, we've, so far we have four, four candidates, so we're gonna be doing the interview process for that. And then, um, lastly, I just wanna make sure everyone is aware, 'cause it's, it's, it's been flip-flopping back and forth since I've, I've been here. When we have council positions, everyone, you're basically a representative of that. That doesn't mean that you can't work on something else, so if, if you're with streets, that doesn't mean you can't help with economic development. If you're with economic development, it doesn't mean you can't help with utilities. Like, I, I keep kinda hearing people say, well, I'm with this, so I can't do, like, we can, we all can do something with everything. And, and that needs to get done because I'm, just, just be honest, nothing's getting done. And we gotta get something done, so, I mean, instead of kinda sitting around wondering what you can do, we gotta get something done, so that, that needs to happen and that, the, the community needs that to happen. Um, and then lastly, we, um, we will be moving stuff over. The police got approved to move over, so we will be moving stuff from over here to over there, so if you do come up here, can you please just kinda stay in the front of the building unless you absolutely have to be back here, so nothing gets misplaced or moved or whatever it may be. And that's all I have.
Yay, finally.
Sam, we got finance, David?
Motion to approve fiscal officer expenditures as received and expected to date twenty twenty-five and approved to pay the bills as received.
I'll second. Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion to approve the all funds bank balances for December twenty-four, twenty twenty-four as reported.
I'll second that. Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance number zero, or O twenty twenty-five dash one, an ordinance approving the certificate of the total amount from all sources available for expenditures and balances and total appropriated amounts for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for the village of Wyndham and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Go ahead.
Scott?
Yes.
Let's put that to Scott.
Yes. Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, motion to approve ordinance number O twenty twenty-five dash two, an ordinance approving and adopting the permanent appropriations for twenty twenty-five for the village of Wyndham called for in that budget and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
I'll second. Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry? Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
No, thank you, David. Eleven utilities?
I'll read it.
Um, motion to approve resolution, resolution R twenty twenty-five dash O one, resolution authorizing Mayor Lawrence Cunningham to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement for construction of the water meter replacement project between the village of Wyndham and Ohio Water Development Authority.
Can we discuss this before we vote on it?
Yes.
Right, we're like, we gotta look at what they do. Um, we got approved for the water meters like we was talking about, we was trying to get it, it'll go, it'll go out to, um, competitive bidding and that whole process. Um, I think it's, I don't have the paper in front of me, it's like two hundred and eight, two hundred and six thousand dollars. That does include some of the leak protection and, uh, the reader. Um, and what the reader is, I'll just explain it real quick. It goes on the tower, so after they're reading, if someone finals out, or say, when they're out reading the meters, it doesn't pick it up, or you can get on their computer and read it without sending the guys out, it's pretty nice. But that's at a one point seven-five percent interest. Now, uh, Dave said he thought it was four or five dollars. I didn't get a chance to look. I thought the meter fund was ten dollars, right?
I thought we raised it from four to five. I looked at my warrant.
I thought it was ten for some other, some other reason, but at any rate, at a ten-year loan, what we bring in for the, the meter fund should cover the loan payment. So.
I thought we moved it to five, 'cause it's four dollars right now. I thought we moved it to five-two last year.
And it didn't go in, is that what happened?
Yeah, do you remember, or? Our water bill for the meter replacement fund, it was always four dollars. I thought we, I know we proved to move it up some.
Multiple things were increased last year, the specific one I can't.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it was moved up to five.
Even at, even at four dollars, that's ten thousand dollars a month, at a one point seven-five percent interest, the loan payment should not be that, you know what I mean, that should still cover it, and the meter's got a ten-year warranty, so I think it'll work out good. But we do have to go through the bid process, get a couple more bids, and then, you know, have the bid meeting and, uh, and, and that will process, so.
There's no, uh, uh, grants or anything like that available for that?
That's.
Not, not as soon as we need it, I guess.
One of the biggest issues that we have is Badger, you know, and we've been fighting that software to keep it alive. Mac had to take the computer to Cleveland so they could, it, it's slipping along right now.
That's on Windows seven, correct?
Yeah, and I don't see, I, I just don't think it's good economics to put money into a system or a meter that we're doing away with.
Agreed.
You know, and then, at this rate, like, uh, Mark Underwood locked us in from like the end of last year when the meters dropped a little bit, he gave us the price for all of it, and he told me if we get secure a loan, you would keep that price for those meters. So I've been, like, kinda dragging him along, and then I just asked him after we got approved, I'm like, you still gonna honor that price? And he was like, yeah, we're still good. So in the long run, if you think of the inflation and what it's gonna cost the meters, like, if we would've done it the other way, it'd been six years, a hundred a year for six years, and six years, what's that meter gonna cost? You know what I'm saying? So at one point seven-five percent, I think it just makes sense to get an improvement now and not put no more money into Badger or the software or the headache.
I'm sure you said, uh, I didn't hear. How many, uh, meters is that?
That's four, six hundred and sixty roughly. And there, there's, there's a handful of two-inch meters, an inch and a half meters, you know, 'cause you got like Carver's Walk, or you got the gas station, you got Renaissance Center, Coleman Center, the schools. So, and those are a little more expensive, but all that's, all that's, uh, the end of that price, yeah. The problem, i- if you remember, when we got the Badger meters, we bought the first set, they were obsolete, you know, we, we got them off, they was just sitting on the shelf, and they, and we've had no luck at all with Badger at all. It's, it's just, we're always fighting it and...
We got a great buy, what we thought was a great buy. There was a good reason why we got it.
Why we thought, yeah, yeah, exactly.
They needed to get them off the shelf.
Last one all the way to the bank.
Yes.
Uh, so in that bid package, when we put it together, our guys are gonna install it, correct?
Yeah.
To save money, and then it's gonna be this, we're gonna put the bid specs together so that we's.
Yeah, we have to look at the logistics of that though, because it, well, I don't know if it has to be prevailing wage with the note of your D.
Some of them do.
I don't know as a loan, but that's all the stuff that we gotta figure out, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to figure all that out.
I would, uh, I would assume so until we find out otherwise.
So something you two are gonna work on then?
Yeah.
Together, so that we get everything legal?
Yeah, 'cause we'll, after we get the bid.
I mean, the bid package itself is overly complicated, it's just the question of what you put in it, and I think there was, what I've seen so far, there was some specificity that you can put in for the one particular meter, I believe it was. So. What are you giving me from the bid package to get it out?
I just, talking about our guys installing it, if that was, that would be afterwards, right? After it's awarded, or, well, if the bid package, if we need other people installing, we'd have to have it in there.
Yeah, I'll.
Seems about right.
We'll go through and see.
I don't install water meters, so I can't tell you the specifics of that. Give me the language, I put it in the bid.
Okay.
I think if you're doing prevailing wage, you can use your guys if you're paying for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, that was my understanding.
Save you some money, not as much.
Well, yeah, if you're gonna pay some prevailing wages, why not pay our guys?
Why not take care of your own?
Exactly.
Right, right. At least the state and the community. Gonna take their taxes back out. Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
All right, um, David, is that, are you good with that, or?
Um, I just wanna clarify, the reader for the tower, that's an additional item. We already have a way of reading the meters that are in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh.
It's read by, uh, either a tablet or a phone or an Android.
Right, and we have one of those right now that's dedicated for the water department?
We do.
Separate phone from everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is already kinda, does the county have to inspect after they're installed or anything like that? I don't.
Don't think so.
Know what, you know, I, things are, so.
It's not like a new project, it's a replacement, but even if, even if we was just pulling them in, they wouldn't have to inspect them now.
I understand.
Did somebody give us a, do we have a second on that?
Oh, I'll second.
We didn't, well, well.
Oh, she didn't make the motion yet.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Marilyn.
We were discussing, so, uh, if discussion's over, then motion to accept the, uh, resolution R twenty twenty-five dash O one.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes. You said that was a ten-year loan?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I don't have anything for service committee.
Twelve, service, Sherry? Well, okay, move on.
Okay.
Uh, thirteen, economic development, Sherry?
Uh, is, this is the third and final read. Don't I have to make a motion after that to accept it, right? Okay, so I'm gonna have to write that in. Third and final read of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve, an ordinance amending section eleven seventy-two point O two. Purpose and zoning C one local commercial district to address medical recreational marijuana facilities of the codified ordinance of the village of Wyndham. Ordinance is attached. I make a motion to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Second. All right, Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Third and final read of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance adopted in chapter seven eleven to the codified ordinances to address medical recreational marijuana entities within the village of Wyndham. Ordinance is attached. I make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
Second. Scott?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion passed. Second read of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance to suspend the water tap and fees as contained in section nine two three point O two of the Wyndham Utility Code effective April first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and set it at a fixed rate. Ordinance is attached.
Second.
No, that's just the second read, second, that's okay.
All right, thank you, Terry. Fourteen, safety and personnel, Scott?
The only thing I have is, uh, we started, uh, interviewing for the new fiscal officer, and, uh, once we're done with those, I'm sure we're going to, uh, bring everyone up to speed and see what we have. That's where I'll add.
Thank you, Scott. Fifteen, parks and rec, Cheryl?
Um, I've been looking over the books that I took home, and I've been looking at, and Terry and I are, are looking at, uh, two ones. The, um, the one about the, um,
Playground?
Playground, and the other one about
Splash.
The splash pad.
Um, just to clarify, I saw the Lions Club is working on their seventh bench, if that's.
That should be ours.
Yes, it is. I just wanna make sure. Easy.
That's ours.
No, whoa, whoa, why are you over here?
I've been up since four.
Concrete, everything's set, ready to go, right?
Yeah.
And I gotta get ahold of Alan too, because we got a bunch of bags too to get him for donating.
Is the plastic still back there?
Yes, I'll get ahold of Alan.
They've thrown out, so. It's getting close to it, though.
Yeah, I know.
It's close.
Terry, who normally gets picked it up?
Um, well, uh, Tony and Mary Masters is the one that usually takes it to, um, Giant Eagle or wherever.
I don't know where it goes. I was just gonna call Alan Finn, but, okay.
You can, yeah, Alan's fine.
See where, see where it goes. I'll load it in the truck to take it.
Yeah, well, like, yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Tony about that, he just didn't have room for the big boxes yet, so, but they need fifty pounds more and then get to seven.
Okay, perfect. There's a lot there, okay.
While we're on this stuff in the hallway, Chris, did you want that cabinet?
You know what, I put it in my truck. Hey, I gotta resell, uh.
No, I'm, if you don't want it, we're, we're gonna throw it out, so.
No, Brian, my car, Brian, I put it in my chassis.
That'll work.
Brian, do you mind?
No.
I'll take it.
Another thing too, the pancake breakfast from the Lions Club is this Sunday, from eight to twelve?
At the Rick Chapel?
At the Rick Chapel.
Who's that one for?
I don't know.
It's for, uh, volleyball, is it volleyball?
'Cause last time we did.
Football, yeah.
I think it's volleyball this time.
Is this breakfast, do you know, or you said?
No, you can get it.
Well, either or.
Either or. Pancake breakfast. It is good, though.
I know.
They do good.
I know.
It's Sunday, yeah.
Eight to twelve.
I will be there. All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Planning commission, we've gotten nothing this month. Seventeen, police chief.
Uh, we're moving along on the laser thing. Uh, we are in the warning phase, we should be, I downloaded some software today, so we can start getting the videos back and approving and going through the initial phases of that to see how that works out, so next week we should start doing that, as the mayor's talking about the certificate of occupancy for the building. So, we should be able to start moving stuff soon. I gotta get a Nick to do the walkthrough for the fire department, and then we gotta get some fire extinguishers, I don't think we have any over there, so.
Um, I would, do we have a company? We have to have a company. Who do we use?
We do, they come through once a year.
Is it MES now? Warn, Fire is now MES? Okay, that's who I would get ahold of.
Well, yeah, they, uh, we gotta have them come out, so.
They usually come out about now, they do.
Well, yeah, they call and they wanna set up a time, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to get ahold of everybody and know if they was coming.
Um, on the speed camera, obviously I'm not a fan of it, but we discussed last week or two weeks ago about going on the turnpike. Any more thought into that?
I believe that they are not really for us using the turnpike. I spoke at length with the company, Targeting Solutions.
How can they constitute, well, if we're paying for the service?
I don't think they can, but what they, what we can be held accountable for is signage, which I don't know that we have the right to go out onto that private roadway and post a sign, so.
That's a privately owned road, so you're gonna need their permission to post your signs.
Technically, the sheriff's office has already broached the issue of doing traffic out there for criminal traffic citations. So, we could go out and do criminal traffic citations out there, um, but the way it's set up is the county gets most of the funds. When, when they built that turnpike, I've already researched it, so like, most of the funds would go to the county and we wouldn't make any money off it anyway. Um, so.
Criminal, it's a very unsafe place to be if you're getting out of your. Criminal, it's a very unsafe place to be if you're getting out of your car.
Absolutely.
And interacting.
Absolutely.
But if you're sitting in your car running radar and turn around, right.
So, the thing is for us, does it benefit us to be out there and not here?
Well, you said you were gonna add another person on to run this camera, right?
If it.
Once it starts making money.
If it's something that generates income and is, I mean. Obviously, the technical term for all this is we want to make sure that it's doing its job and slowing people down.
Right, cause I wanna make sure, remember when we first brought this up, it was, this is not gonna take away from us patrolling and actually getting out of our car and interacting.
No, it's not.
Okay.
So. Like I said, there's a, there's a certain timeframe that I've, we've identified as our traffic times and when we get most of our issues. So, we have those covered where we're gonna have somebody here, it'll either be me, the uh, or the sergeant. Or the SRO when he's not in school, is who I, you certified right now to do it.
Okay.
So that we're here and we can flex our schedules.
Okay.
Um, more sidebar, are you gonna be here in the morning?
Five o'clock.
All right, you and Brian, um, J C's supposed to come look at the electric. I told him about that breaker that you had, so if you guys are around when they come, if I'm not here, just kinda show them what we're talking about.
They say what's on?
Uh, the paper's on your desk right in front of your computer, I forget, I think it's never nothing. All right, thank you. Is zoning Chris?
Oh, okay, so now, Chuck was gonna not tell me, understand, so now that the cannabis dispensary ordinance is approved. How does it get into our codified book thing? Just wondering.
After thirty days, you turn it into whoever your publishers.
Who does that?
We did it not too long ago with.
I think this.
Yeah, I can do it. She has the, she pulled that information not too long ago.
Okay, so about that, so we had that, um, those people very interested. And now I can't find them, I can't reach them, I talked to uh, Michael DeFranco, the realtor. He, I don't think he's heard from them either, so they must have moved on because maybe the time, I don't know. But that's nothing to be discouraged about, there's a lot of people wanting to open those up. Um, I'm still talking to the architect Lawrence, I don't think you heard that one, but. Backside of Hope on Wheels, they're wanting to build a deck, did him, you heard it?
Yeah, over in front of where the old library part is.
On the back and it kind of lets up the community.
Yeah, I went up and Teddy showed me the.
Did he show you?
Papers and stuff.
Yeah, cause they gotta be like five feet from the lines, so the architect's trying to make it. So it looks like it's gonna be like a twelve by thirty eight or something, I don't know, is that what he told you?
Yeah.
So anyway, we're still trying to iron that out to the exact size. And other than that, that project over in Wyndham Circle. It looks like they cleaned up a little bit, but there's a lot of furniture, I don't know where we're gonna go with this, sofas.
If you gave them a notice and they haven't done it, I'll, I'll send Jake over, clean it up.
I mean, the landlord got a notice, it's just.
Yeah, we'll get it cleaned up then.
I mean, someone's gonna haul that stuff out. Other than that, that's about the end of mine.
All right, thank you. Uh, nineteen, housing report.
So, um, thirteen property owners have paid already for their uh, rental properties. Um, nine, five, three, nine, Green Meadow is making headway, so I should be. Inspecting that after in February sometime, that's a notice. And uh, I did uh, this property owners, he had about five uh, six, six plexes. Yeah, five of them I did, uh, all of them were pretty good for them to be uh. The, one of the properties out there, the BJ's. Nine thousand oh court was really the only one that I saw any real issues with, and that was only.
Not the one to the left in the back?
Yeah, in the back to the left, it's probably not the one that's by the street, but.
Yeah, the one.
Six plex, there's six there?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that one. Yeah, he, he takes good care of them, but unfortunately, the, the ground is shifting underneath still, so. But I let him know and uh, that's really the only one that I really had any issues with, all the rest of them were pretty good. That's where, that's where I'm at right now.
Did you have a chance to look at the, was it porch or something you brought up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went over and looked at the porch, I didn't see anything unfortunately because of the snow. I went back over again to talk to someone to see if they can kinda point me in the right direction. Like, I, I didn't have anybody answer the door, so I'll keep. Soon as this snow melt, I mean, I've been busy. So I, as soon as the snow melts, I'll, I'll be over there to check it out and see what a real issue is.
Thank you. Uh, the other one, Ms. Mary, you weren't here last meeting, I brought up about the gentleman's backyard that we, Sheila brought up and brought pictures of. Are we anywhere with that?
Uh, right now, obviously they can't go out there.
Right.
But nah, he, he, he called me not too long ago, they did go over and, and set up a plan and it's just a matter of getting it done, so. He did speak with them and they're, they'll get it done.
Okay.
That's it, that's it, all right, thanks. Um, twenty, village administrator.
Well, I don't have too much, uh, as soon as I get the, um. Specs of the Kwanzaa hut and the garage doors, we're gonna put them on go deals. The blue truck that was sold at the wastewater plant, I guess the guy never paid or covered it, so we had to put it back on go deals. So hopefully, we get rid of those and get them out of there. For the wastewater plant, something we gotta start thinking about, um, and I'll make you, all you guys a copy of this. Starting next calendar year. Um. The EPA's getting more stringent on the phosphorus levels, so we have to start, we'll have to start treating for that. Billy and um, uh, Brandon went to Middlefield. And checked out their plant to see what their process was. Billy's been doing a lot of um, research, there's a couple different ways you can do it, you can do it through a biological process, which. It's too costly for us, cause then you'd have to build a whole nother clarifier and. The, the infrastructure for that is just, is, is pretty expensive. But you can do it with um, like uh, Furyk, Furious or Owl, which. Problem with that stuff is it could potentially freeze in the winter time. Uh, he found this Water FX that is a little more pricey than the rest of them. But it doesn't take as much to remove it, so it's kinda like a balance, you know, and it doesn't. It'll um. The freezing point's like forty degrees below Fahrenheit, so it's not gonna freeze. Um. So, he, he got a quote, I'll just read you this. Ballpark cost system, move one, one point five milligrams a liter from a hundred thousand gallon per day flow. Would require, would require two to four gallons per day, the Water FX. A tote is two hundred and fifty five gallons, which would last sixty five to a hundred twenty five days, so you figure three to six totes a year. Delivery price of a tote is approximately thirty five hundred, make an annual cost range, ready? Ten thousand to twenty one thousand a year. Since Water FX does not freeze, you simply need a paristalatic chemical pump two thousand. To begin treatment. Um, so there is options, unfortunately, I don't think there's, it's just another expense down there, but.
When does that mandate kick in?
Next year, next calendar year.
Twenty twenty six.
So.
Be ready for it.
We're, we're, the good thing is like, for the limit. We're just above the limit, so it's not like we have to use extensive amount of chemicals. To get it down to where we need to be, if there's anything good about it. But, um, it's like non-negotiable, you know, like. They will not give us a permit if we can't.
The phosphorus, is that measured in the creek at the end of treatment?
Yeah, the effluent.
Okay, so has our phosphorus went up in the last couple years?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay, cause I'm just wondering, we got all that, and I'm just speculating, but that horse farm's right there. All the manure gets put behind it and that is all downhill to the creek.
Well. Uh.
And obviously horse manure contains a lot of phosphorus.
We sent uh, Chris down there to tell him they couldn't, they couldn't put it there, they can't just dump it there. But Billy did leave the grass high, believe it or not, that does help, it, it kinda fuels it out, prevents it from getting in there, and that was the reason. That grass was kinda high there last year.
Right, cause I brought that up to Billy last year when I started noticing that all getting dumped there, said, how's that gonna change your readouts?
Yeah, but they said, Chris, didn't they say they was gonna move that?
Yeah, I think that got moved pretty fast, didn't it?
Yeah, I don't think it's still there, but we.
It was just temporary deal or something, she said.
But I'm just like, is it being removed off site? Because anywhere along their property line is gonna drift towards the sewer plant.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if we can do anything about that.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll watch and stay on it, but.
Right.
Well, the good thing is, if it falls, like you got the upstream and the downstream, and when you sample, you gotta do an upstream and a downstream, to say, okay, well. If you, to do the upstream, if it's already in there, that's not coming from us.
Right.
If it's not in the upstream, but they find it in the downstream, it's ours.
Right, it just sucks because it's literally right there in line where the downstream starts.
It does, as soon as I seen that, I addressed it, and Chris went over and talked to him, like you can't, you can't just dump that in the village.
Right.
Cause at the end of the day, that's still the village.
Right.
You know, and you can't just throw piles of manure in, in the village, like. So.
Now, they have any protections, like with the being agricultural? Even like, it was never technically changed to agricultural, but they have horses there. So can they come back and say, oh no, we're agricultural, we, we got horses, we can dump it.
Well, it would have had to then rezone for.
It was commercial. It was still.
Yeah.
And then residential.
Okay.
But if they have five acres, they're allowed to have horses.
And I think that was the loophole, I think it was changed to residential, they built the house and then had enough property for.
For the horses.
And I understand having the horses, I just wanted to know, but they were had a lot of protections because it is now agricultural.
And that's a lot of horses for the little. Yeah, like four or five.
I don't know.
He's got five.
I think I more than five, because they bought the other lot too.
Yeah, Sheila, you probably know.
His mom bought that.
Ten, all of that.
But.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not agricultural, that's our two, I believe.
It's just they're allowed to have horses, cause they have the five acres.
Right.
That's what made it a lot.
The, I'm talking about the lot across from the Legion.
Oh, that one?
That's our two, ain't it?
Well, it's a separate thing, it's orange.
But that's five acres too.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean.
Uh, that's ours, right?
So, so as long as it's not agricultural, you can't use it for a hay field or nothing.
That's our two.
Yeah, so.
All right, let's uh.
Anyways, I'll move on. Okay, so you got that, um. After we had that bit of uh, power outage the last time. It burned up the flow meter, the effluent flow meter.
Absolutely.
That's the reply. So that's a whopping four thousand seven hundred dollars. So, this is just all stuff we gotta be aware of, we still gotta do the other clarifier, you know, we did the one last year for thirty thousand. The other one, we gotta get done still too, so.
And we still need a generator.
Yeah, and we still gotta do the other filter.
That's the big one, yeah.
Yeah.
This is the part where if everybody tries to do something, it'll help out.
Yeah, it would, it would be very appreciated, because, I mean, that alone, if you just think of the. I mean, the generator, it would be horrible, but we can, we can live with it, it is what it is. I mean, it really needs updated, because you can't run the plan, you can't just run half the plan, like. The way they have it set up just has never made any sense at all, you can run the back half, but you can't get the front half to get it there, so. Doesn't, doesn't make any sense at all. But with the filter, with the clarifier. With these two things here, you're like at a hundred and what, forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, plus, didn't he want the thing to rake out all this stuff before it comes into?
The bar screen?
Yeah.
We could do that, we, we was talking, um, right now, it's got a, it's got one bar screen and then a accumulator. And we could do away with that, and we could probably do that in houses, I mean, that's simple, we can, we can make bar screens and put it in there to save money. But the biggest like this, you have to have a flow meter.
Right.
Before and after, I mean, that's, that's.
So you, you ordering that?
Uh, I haven't yet, I have to get the P O first and then. I don't wanna, like, this is a lot of money.
You gotta do that.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't want you guys looking at it and be surprised.
Does that flow meter come from one individual company, or is there?
This is just, this is just one quote.
Okay.
Um, control associates, I mean, we can get other quotes too, but, I mean, this is just. I just wanted to bring it up, so you guys are not caught off guard, that you're aware of some of the issues and some of the challenges that. Were faced about it.
The other filter that we have to have done, I thought the guy that was, did the first filter, I thought he was trying to get us a grant.
He's, yeah.
Is he still doing that?
Yeah, I gotta see where he's at with it, but.
Problem two is federal government just to put a ban or a hold on all federal grant monies.
Oh, that's right, they did, I just read that.
Trump did that, so right now, till he gets a grasp on everything, there's not gonna be a federal grant available.
I think the federal judge just undid that.
Of course.
Put a block on it.
That happened just today?
Yeah, I just read it somewhere.
It just wanted to affect it, I didn't see it.
Cause it was supposed to go into effect tonight, so the federal judge put a block on his. His block. Now, whether it stays or not, cause another federal judge would change it.
Um, how's our salt?
Okay, so, salt, we uh, we used every bit of what we was allowed through the CEU plan. But fortunately, like, nobody anticipated a winter like this, when everybody ordered, they did it. According to the prior years, but everybody did that. So CEU was like working with each other, everybody, they're like, you know what, we get it, happened to everybody, wasn't just us. So they're still uh, providing the salt now, it kinda stinks because, you know, streets is. It has limited tons, but, um, we was able to get some. And like I said, we're out of our plan, like, we've done use that. But Robbie just got um, fifty thousand, or fifty ton. And um, so we're in good shape with it. Now, I mean.
Are we sharing that with the school?
Um, Jake had gotten a loan.
Did he?
Now, of course, if they need some, we'll give them some, but.
I think township was out too, they were out.
Yeah, Garrison just ordered some too, so.
Right, yeah.
For next year, does that affect how much we buy next year? Like what they require us to buy, does it increase that, or we choose how much we want?
We choose, we pick and choose, so it's kinda like just a roll of the dice, you know?
Okay, I just wanna make sure the extra fifty we bought now is not gonna be required of us next.
No, the only stipulation is we have to take what we, what we call for.
Okay.
We have to take it like regardless, we have to take it.
Okay.
So.
Cool.
And maybe next year we'll be in the middle. And maybe next year, we'll be in the middle of what it has this year and then see how it goes, I don't know. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ryan. Twenty-one solicitors report.
I have nothing.
Twenty-two, last chance for anyone to speak. Everybody else got anything before I go?
No, you go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, what's our plans for spring? Are we putting something together for like the village, like, streetwide, like, anything that we're planning on doing? Like gearing up for cleanups, anything like that, like, we, we obviously, we need to discuss with township, spring cleanup, but. Just on like the street side of things, or even the water sewer plants outside.
Yeah, um, for the wastewater, Matt gave me some information on, on, uh. There might be some available money for different equipment. We was talking about getting the leaf vac, you know, finding ones, um. We talked about maybe. I, I, and again, I know it's not that I just wanna spend money, but. We're we're dumping ton of money into that Hustler and their junk, like, every year. I can't, I'm sorry, my throat's.
We got a junk mower that needs replaced essentially.
We bought a couple of them.
Yep. Everybody I know that bought Hustlers, I regret.
That was the last one, that's the one we bought years and years ago, it's still here.
We just bought one.
And every single year, we put a bunch of money into them. And it stays down, you know, and it needs some work now, so it's just something to consider, but. We's also looking at maybe a chipper, because we pick up a lot of brush, and if we chipped all that stuff, we could use it for the community center, we could use it for the park. Community could have some, you know what I mean, and then we're not, it's not just stacking up or we're doing fires at the.
Right.
At the, so we're looking at all that, uh, Robbie had mentioned that he'd like to get a commercial. Grass sweeper, you know, for the park, which would be great for the spring, because there's signs, you can't get back there, it's just so wet. So I had mentioned that maybe we could work with, um, Hot Stone to see if maybe they wanna go in on a, a roller and a, a sweep for the park. Because, like, we're packing out our park, and there's been people coming from all over the place, and I'd really like to get all that cleaned up. We wanna get rid of the Kwanzaa, get all that cleaned up down there, like where they keep the dirt and all the drags and all that stuff, get all that cleaned up, find a place for it, put up a building. But, again, like Mac was saying, this is, like, if anybody would wanna help us, like, do the legwork to look for some of this money. I mean, there's packets and information on it, but.
Yeah. We, we definitely need to rebuild the dugouts and stuff, because.
Yeah, not just that, like, like, just, just throwing out ideas, like, just brainstorming to help us, you know what I mean? Cause we focus on the matter at hand, sometimes we don't always think outside of the box, so the more people involved, the better off. You know? It'd be cool.
Cause I think those dugouts are from when I was a kid.
Yeah.
And they're showing their age.
Yeah, they need some work. I'd like to get those stumps out of there, those stumps are horrible.
Yep.
So some of them are rotted enough, we could probably get it with the mini excavator, I think we could.
But the time and effort to do all that, and when we could just hire a company to come in and grind it, or we can get a grinder, but. I'd say we just hire a company, grind the stumps, be done.
Yeah, cause we talked about that as well. After we got rid of all those stumps, we wouldn't use it that much. I don't think we used it enough to justify purchasing one. So.
But I, I know.
That's all stuff that, that, you know, we're working on.
Um, hanging baskets, have we figured out that for next year or this year?
So, we're not doing it this year.
At all?
We spent a lot of money over the la- couple, the last couple of years, um. I, again, received a lot of feedback about the baskets and how they look. Um, the baskets that we had from this past year were like, I don't know, would I tell you, ten or fifteen years old, they were hanging down. She made some recommendations on some that we can look, um, she was sending me some information on some that we might wanna get moving forward. Um, but they're a little bit costly, she's, you know, and I thought if we waited a year and invested that money and get the. We did, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought they were provided when we bought the flowers.
No, no.
Give them to her, she feels.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, and. So anyways, again, we're, we're paying well over two thousand dollars every year for, for them, and so. I had talked to her and she said she was gonna send some additional information on, um, some that they're using now. So if you want flowers that hang, you need to use this type of stuff, and she was trying to repair and stitch up. And do all of this stuff with those, so, again, we're not ordering baskets this year.
Is the water server back up? It came in last week and it was down because of Spectrum, it's back up and running?
Yeah, I guess what was happening, every time there was a glitch in the internet, it would change IP address. So, the software couldn't locate it because it was searching the old IP address, so. Spectrum come in and they installed a permanent IP address, so no matter if it goes off, C M I P address comes back up, and that solved that problem, I guess.
Oh, great. Uh, website update, when we talked about switching, because.
Still in the process of going through, um, we do have a design right now, I'm trying to twerk. Pardon me. They, uh.
No, stop.
They, uh, they, uh, they had one and it was like, I didn't like the way it looked, it was, it was, it had the picture on it. Then there was a white border and it just kinda looked, it looked generic, so then they sent another one with a yellow. Uh, color that was kinda faded, so now it's more of like an older, like a true yellow and. It has all the stuff, so it is some stuff you gotta still go through. Then, once we get to that, send over all the stuff and they're gonna go from there, so it'll be a little bit, there's still some stuff to work out.
Alright, and then two more, um. Since Ryan's not in here, I'll wait for that one, but when are we gonna do the handbook update? Cause there's several things, like, that were brought up, uh. Around Christmas time, like those guys went out on two water main breaks, they had two holidays back to back. And they're working, you know, over forty hours and they don't hit their overtime until after. Uh, well, you have sixteen hours taken out right off the rip, so they're working additional hours to get to that overtime, even though they're out. You know, late at night stuff on those water main breaks and coming in on Saturdays for the second day of the one that happened on Friday on Blanton. Or, yeah, Blanton, so that's something we need to look into, how we can fairly compensate them and legally compensate them.
Well, they're paid for the holidays.
Right, but you're a holiday.
Um, for those two holidays, and once they get over the forty hours actually worked, then they're paid overtime.
That's what I'm saying, if you have those two days, that's sixteen hours, right? But that doesn't count towards your forty hours worked in that week.
You know, I should put them at forty-two actual work that week, that forty-two, you subtract sixteen, you add it, what?
I guess his point is more that they're working out, working on Saturdays and Sundays, twelve and fourteen hours a day on time and half, I guess that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, cause like, if you have that two holidays, that doesn't count towards your forty hours for that week.
If you're off those days, that's wage and labor, cause when I used to negotiate contracts for Carver Falls.
That's you.
You can't change that.
But I, but we pay our people.
So I'm just saying, like, you come in and you're working Friday and Saturday, you might not have gotten to your overtime hours because you had.
Holiday.
Holiday pay on there.
Yeah, you can't, you can't go into, if you use a sick day or a holiday. Or anything, that's federal law, you can't go into overtime when you use that time.
Okay.
Until you work forty hours.
Until you work forty hours.
Physically work forty hours.
I, I think we pay at my company, if they don't.
Private can.
Private, private can do whatever they want.
Government can.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
I don't know why you want to change that. They're compensated.
Yeah, but.
It's not like as if they're not compensated for the work they're doing, plus they're getting two extra days of straight pay.
Right.
It's just happen to fall into straight, the worst time of year for that to happen for them, I think.
Okay, well, either way, Saturdays and stuff like that, we can look at too, so. For compensate, but whatever, either way, we still, there's other things on the handbook thing that we still need to talk about.
Should be regularly updated.
Right, you know, cause we were supposed to talk about it last year and then it kept getting delayed and delayed.
We should probably set designate a time every year to review the handbook and put new things in.
Good times looking at during your committee.
Although, yeah, I'll meet with all the.
Redline it, we put that into an ordinance and you make your changes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all the people in the building are meeting with February tenth, I'm gonna get that out. So I'll meet with them, then we can do it at our committee meeting after that. So then I have all the stuff that they at least wanna change and stuff, and then we'll just go from there, instead of kinda doing it.
Yeah, back and forth. And then the last one is, uh, we talked about this last year, towards the end of the season, but. I think we should do bidding for, like Ryan brought up, cleanups and mowing. Um, nothing against Jake, but I think we need to put it out to bid, just so we can get the fair price. And make sure it's all essentially right, so. That way, we have three bids on record, anybody comes back, they can't say, hey, we picked this person because we're friends with them. You know, we have three bids, we did it the right way.
Tell about for the grass cutting?
Yeah. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but.
That's probably a good practice.
Yeah, cause there's two or three people in town.
Even if they're out of town, I mean.
I mean, but.
Right.
We wanna keep it local, I mean, there's still two or three people in town.
Is that total over seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
No.
And you, you don't need to bid, you just.
What'd you say, Charles?
If it's not over seventy-five thousand, you can bid it out.
I know.
You can get, you can acquire.
You can acquire, I'm not saying like legally, we have to put it out for bid, I'm saying like, we acquire.
When you say bid, that's what I.
Yeah. Yeah, we get quotes, so that way we're seeing what options we have.
Yeah, I don't think it, it hurts to look at our other people in town and give them, uh.
The option.
What, what it's entitled in, into this and, uh.
If you have multiple people in town, it wouldn't be a bad idea to split it up.
Yeah, so they all, yeah.
Well, the problem I see with that is liability, you know, somebody goes to house A and mows and damages something, and somebody goes to house B, it's a different contractor. How do you, I mean, you can keep track.
Well, because, because they have to, they send us a bill on what address they mowed, what they did to that property, so they. They have to be stamped on whatever they did.
Right. Yeah, either way, as long as we can get it out there, allow other people in the community to have a chance and go from there. Cause like cleanup, I mean, there's probably several people in the community that would like to jump on that possibility to make extra money.
They, they do have to be bonded, right?
Well, I think they should have an L C, they should be bonded, insured and all that, and that's another thing we can review to make sure.
Because if they have their, like, like, for, for my parks, when I, that I contract for. They won't let me on that property if I don't have my own workman's comp, because if something happens, they're gonna fall on them.
Right.
And they're liable. With me having my, like, I could have zero, um. Payout for my workman's comp, it's just saying if something happens to me, I ain't getting nothing. But nobody else is liable for it, mine, mine'll take care of it. So, which is a good practice, because if they get hurt here or whatever, it's on their workman's comp, it's not on us.
Right. That's all.
Anybody else? Go on to the calendar. Uh, February eleventh, six P M, everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, February twenty-fifth, six P M.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Alright.
Oh, hold on, one last little thing, um, this weekend, cause I love kids. They do have the Little Dribblers Tournament for the girls this weekend, and the boys are next weekend for basketball. Um, I know, um. Sheila, you, you, sometime you bake stuff and stuff, so if you wanted to bring anything like that, they have the tournament going on. It's all day from eight A M to eight P M on, uh, Saturday to Sunday. So if any of you got any spare time to come check us out, my girls are pretty tough, so.
Yeah, I saw that.
We're, we're pretty good, so, just to throw that out there, so the next two weekends, there is, uh, events going on at the school. You wanna come check out our youth.
Alright, very good. Alright, seven oh five, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn regular council meeting.
Second.
Scott? Carrie?
Yes.
Carrie, yes, Carolyn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Alright, ten minutes.